Hello.
Hey Chairman.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, good. Lauren, I think everybody's here.
Yes Chairman, I believe everybody is in attendance, if you'd like to go ahead.
Okay, thank you. NITC Planning Commission Agenda for September 21st, 2020. We do, starting at seven o'clock, we do roll calls. We call the order and then roll calls.
Commissioner Lemus.
Here.
Commissioner O'Nite.
Here.
Commissioner Hancock.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Murphy.
Here.
And Chairman Moore.
Here.
Can I get approval of the minutes for Gattati Planning Commission Regular Meeting of 18th, 2020? Is there any changes to the minutes? Hello?
Hello, this is Neil here, I don't see any changes, I propose to approve the minutes as they are.
Hey, do I have a second?
This is Brittany Murphy, I'll second.
Okay, can I get a roll call please?
Commissioner Lemus.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Nite.
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock.
Yes.
Vice Chair Murphy.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Correct. Chairman Moore.
Alright, any changes to the agenda?
Thank you Chairman Moore, this is Noah House, there are no changes to the agenda however, the resolution before the commission is written as a recommendation. However, the only entitlement needed for this action is design review and therefore, Planning Commission has total authority to make the decision, it is not a recommendation to the City Council.
Alright, thank you. So I'm gonna open this up to oral and written communications. The public is asked to please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to items not already agendized for discussion. If anyone, then.
Thank you Chairman Moore, I'm going to just let our attendees know if they would like to speak, if they could raise their hand by using the raise hand icon on their desktop or their phone. Otherwise, if they're just dialing in by their telephone, they can dial Starlight. And Mary Ann Waters, go ahead.
Hi, this is Mary Ann Waters, 8416 Honor Place, Gattati, California. I just want to make sure that this is the, you know, that you let me know when we're addressing the last Grumlin property and I'm here to speak on that.
Alright, that will be our next agenda item.
Thank you.
Chairman Moore, I have no further questions.
Alright, great. I'm gonna close the public, public comment and then move on to matters at hand. So we have consideration of a resolution recommending City Council approval of primary, preliminary design review for six new single-family homes located at Lasker Knoll subdivision, 65 Lasker Lane. We have a staff report please.
Thank you Chairman Moore. Consulting Planner Emmanuel Ursu was the lead staff on this and he has the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you Chairman Moore, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Emmanuel Ursu. It's my pleasure to present this application to the commission this evening. The project before you is a six lot subdivision. And this project was previously approved, I'll get through that. Lauren, can you go to the next slide or is there a way I can control the slides?
I believe you actually might already have control, if you want to give it a test, otherwise I'll roll through them for you.
Okay, yeah, if you can roll through, just go to the next slide for me.
Of course.
So my presentation this evening, I'll make it quick, but I will briefly discuss the project background. This project does have a long history to it, over eighteen years. Give a brief description of the location and the setting of the project. Discuss the details of the homes being proposed. A quick review of the design review criteria that apply. And an overview of the compliance with CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, followed by recommendation. Next slide. So this project, as described in greater detail in the staff reports, actually goes back to the early 2000s when an application for an eight lot subdivision along with PD, zone amendment application was submitted. The zoning at the time was AR, that was changed to R1 PUD, Applying Unit Development. And a conditional use permit was required under the code at that time for this use. The city-approved tentative subdivision map, design review, is gonna be, required to comply with the growth management program and also a negative declaration, mitigated negative declaration under California Environmental Quality Act was adopted. That all happened back in the early 2000s with City Council action taking place in late 2006. The subdivision map had to be extended, it's been extended more than once. The most recent extension occurred in April of this year, is valid through April of 2021. The design review application expired and that's why we're here this evening. And so the Planning Commission will be acting on a new design review application. Next slide. The project is located just west of Old Redwood Highway. South of the downtown, east of Highway 101 as shown in this exhibit. Kind of center of this exhibit. Next slide. This shows a closer aerial of the project site. There's currently one single-family home on the site, the property is 1.81 acres. It's surrounded on three sides by existing single-family residential subdivisions on lots that range in size roughly between about 6,000 to about 14,000 square feet. Seems to be the approximate size of the lots in the neighborhood. The parcel to the, behind the existing house, that'd be to the west, southwest, is a larger parcel that is right next door. Next slide. This shows the zoning on the sites and surrounding the sites. As I mentioned, the zoning on this project site is actually, it's a PUD, that was approved back in 2006. The surrounding homes on the three sides in the developed neighborhoods are in the neighborhood low-density density zone property to the southwest is in the residential very low-density. And directly to south is in the rural residential district. Next slide please. So the subdivision, as I said, has already been approved, tentative subdivision map. And what's before the Planning Commission this evening is consideration of designs for six new homes. One home on each of the six lots. The lot number one, which is at the top of the screen here, fronts on and gets its access from the cul-de-sac on Honor Place. Lots two through six would have access from a new cul-de-sac, which would be an extension of Lasker Lane. Currently, Lasker Lane is a driveway that serves the existing project site plus a couple of other homes off of it and extends from the intersection of Lasker Lane and Dorfman Drive. The, the homes would vary in size and be primarily, a mix would be a mix of one and two stories, primarily two stories. And it'll be roughly in the 33 to 3500 square foot range. Next slide please. So lot one, as I mentioned, is the one that's kind of furthest to the north on the project sites. Its access is from Honor Place. The site, it's in all of these sites slope up from east to west. And so the garage is accessed by a kind of long driveway that comes into a side entry garage. The garage is generally roughly at street level. And then the main home, the little portions of the home are about a half a story above that. The exhibit on the lower right-hand corner here shows the elevation from the garage, the garage facing elevation. The main entry and the porch are on the right side of this exhibit. And this home would be 3,385 square feet in size. Next slide. Lot two is just to the south of lot, a portion of lot one. It is adjacent to the Waters residence, Ms. Waters just spoke a few minutes ago. This home is set back about 15 feet from the neighboring property, from the Waters property. The second story, it is a two-story home, as you noticed, the second story is on the left side as you're facing it from the street, away from the neighbor's home, the existing neighbor's home, with no second-story windows oriented in that direction. The back of this home lines up roughly with the back corner of the neighbor's home. It's offset probably two or three feet. There were conditions, several conditions of approval that were included in the original design review application pertaining to the design and placement of this home with the intention of preserving privacy and access to sunlight for the neighboring property. We have incorporated by reference all of the conditions of approval of the previous approval with additional conditions as appropriate. This home's approximately 3,366 square feet and it's on a 10 and a half thousand, approximately 10 and a half thousand square foot lot. Next slide please. Lot number three also is about lot number one, just to the south of it. This, this home is at the end of the cul-de-sac and from the street, not much of the home will be visible as it will be screened, large portions of it will be screened by the lot, by the home on lot number four. This is a 3,534 square foot home, two stories. And the far left or west side of this parcel's, portions of it are steeper than 15%. Those are the shaded areas at the far left. Those areas are not allowed to be graded and there's an easement to those areas that was recorded as will be recorded as part of the final map process. Next slide. Lot number four is another two-story home. It's between lots three and five, upsloping lot. Garage is slightly below the main level, steps up to the main level and then there's a full second story above that. This home also is in the 3,300 square foot range. Next slide. Lot five, most of the rear yard of lot five is in the 15% slope area. As with the other homes, the garage is recessed back further from the, from the front of the house as is required by the zoning that applies to the property. Next slide. Lot six is probably the steepest lot. This has an average slope of probably close to 12%. The others are down to 8% is probably the shallowest or the flattest lot. This home is single-story and the interior of the home has several levels that step up as you go back into the house. There's probably four different series of two to three steps, four steps between each level as the home kind of steps up with the topography. Next slide. So the Planning Commission is making its decision, will base its decision on the design review criteria contained in the municipal code. There's a total of nine standards. And they're primarily deal with how the proposed homes fit in with the neighborhood in which they're located. And as you see here, these are the standards that we discuss in the staff report and are laid out in the resolution that's before the Planning Commission. Next slide please. At least the last four design review criteria. And in reviewing the application, we find that the project does meet all of these qualitative standards and recommend the Planning Commission approve the project. Next slide. This project was reviewed under the California Environmental Quality Act and an initial study and mitigated negative declaration were prepared and adopted by the City Council back in 2006. With the resubmital of the application, we had a biological resources report prepared to ensure that conditions have not changed. And that the findings, the criteria that were in place in 2006 when the negative declaration was adopted still are the case today. And based on the reports that we received, prepared by Monken Associates, that is the case. Relying on that report, that analysis, the City Council extended the tentative subdivision map two times as recently as April of this year. No subsequent or supplemental initial study or mitigated negative declaration is required nor is an addendum required. And the mitigation monitoring and reporting program that was adopted in 2006 still applies and the project would be subject to the MRP. Next slide please. So with that, we recommend the Planning Commission adopt the resolution that's attached to the report. With the change that Director mentioned, the Planning Commission will be making a decision rather than this being a recommendation to the, to the City Council. And with that, I conclude my report and I'm available for any questions the commission may have. Thank you.
Noah, did you have anything to add to this?
I have nothing to add other than as Senior Planner Ursu identified that the final action for design review rests before the Planning Commission rather than as a recommendation to the council.
Okay. Is there any questions for staff or the applicant?
Hi, this is Sylvia.
Alright. Go ahead Sylvia.
Okay, I just had a question on page 20. It says that there was some conditions that had to be met before the project's approved. Do we know if the developer has addressed some of the items here? For example, there was a setback for lot four that needed to be changed and some encroachments on lot two and five?
I do not know if all of those conditions have been implemented yet. As part of the plan review, plan check process, there'll be a detailed review by the various departments that each had conditions of approval imposed on the project. They will each review the project to ensure consistency or compliance with all conditions of approval.
This is Noah House, I would just add, so subdivisions are a two-step process. The tentative map has been approved. However, a final map and a subdivision improvement agreement will be going before the City Council suffer from this design review action and at that time we will confirm any conditions such as those referenced by Commissioner Lemus will be met.
Steve, do you have anything?
Actually, no, I read it through carefully, these are obviously high-end homes and we could have a dialogue about the requirements for low-end housing, but I think... But I think these people have been jerked around for over eighteen years. So I think we're well on their way and we ought to just get it moving.
Great. Neil, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do. So and I realize there's been a lot of evolution in this from the early days. There is a reference to a pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. And I wonder just from the bigger picture, especially as in the last ten years, we've talked a lot more about how to provide more pedestrian connectivity across the town. If we can talk about what this, where this particular parcel exists and the connectivity from Old Redwood Highway up to Cypress and Logan Place, how would that, there are bus stops down on Old Redwood Highway and there's a fair amount of access back on Cypress Avenue. Is there a way or how would this fit into that connectivity picture?
So from the project site, access is available along Lascar Lane to Old Redwood Highway. It'd be a new sidewalk that would be installed along the, what's now basically a driveway, a private driveway serving the project site plus a couple of other homes. That would sort of, sidewalk would be included on both sides of the new roadway. That would go down to the door from an intersection and then from that point, it's off the project site. But pedestrians would be able to walk down Lascar Lane to Old Redwood Highway.
Brittany, do you have anything?
So, sorry, could I just complete that? I don't think that was really what I'm looking for is that there is a Logan Place and there's a, you know, I think we have, there would be, I'd just like to know how the connections could work or if there's been any discussion of connecting up to Logan Place for if there was any future developments that would make that available? Because we've obviously got a space for a right-of-way or some thinking about this. Anyway, so I'd like to know more about, has been any thinking about connecting from Cypress down to Honor Place or Lascar Lane?
Well, this is Noah House again. So there's no, there's no infrastructure identifying additional pedestrian or bicycle connectivity through this site as you're referencing in the bicycle pedestrian master plan. And when this subdivision was approved, there was not any requirements for dedicated easement or access through this subdivision?
So what would be the, what would be the path for doing that? I do see that there's a policy C1 or CI one dot two dot one on page twenty that's mentioned.
Yeah, absolutely. The policy is one hundred percent in place. It's more if there is not an identified project by the city locating pedestrian or bicycle improvements through this site, then when a subdivision comes forward, that connectivity is either identified at that time and incorporated into the subdivision design or it's not if it's not identified in the plan, which was the case here. And again, this subdivision has been approved. It is a valid tentative map. And so the item before the commission is design review and we are basing our recommendation on the past approval of the tentative map. And the implementation of that policy is seen by the additional sidewalk connectivity being constructed by the project.
Okay, and I realize some of that. I mean, I'm just asking the difficult questions because we have a lot of discussion in the town about vehicle mile travel reductions. And yet here we have a classic case of that we're making a little isolated, a fairly isolated area that doesn't have a lot of ability for people to get out of their vehicles around Cotati. So is there actually, under the policy CI one dot two dot one, fees that are paid into other parts of the bicycle and pedestrian plant? We are also the bicycle and pedestrian committee.
Yeah, that is an excellent point and well noted. We are kind of dealing with a little bit of a vestige product, project just given the timeline that it's been on to get to this point. However, each home constructed will pay park fees as well as traffic impact fees, which will go to a fund, city-designed and proposed bicycle and pedestrian improvements as well as vehicular improvements. And those fees are based on square foot, per square foot. So the size of these homes, staff does anticipate a fairly healthy contribution to that fund.
Okay, thank you very much. I have one other question about design at some point, Chair, but I'll release just right now.
All right, Brittany, do you have anything?
I just have two questions. I wanted to get a little more information or better understanding of the privacy issues that were addressed. What I heard was that there were additional conditions added. And so I thought I could get a little more clarification on that. And then my second question is just what went into any sort of previous discussion around additional traffic impacts this would have for those traveling up to these homes and for the neighboring home? What discussions were had there and what sort of remedies we were able to identify as part of this design?
So in terms of the conditions regarding privacy, this was regarding privacy for the existing home on Honor Place just next to lots one and two. And the planning, or excuse me, the city council's approval from 2006, Resolution sixty-six dash six-nine included several conditions. And the first condition had to do with privacy issues, maintaining privacy. And those conditions remain in effect. We are recommending that all of those conditions be included by reference in planning commission's approval this evening. So some of those requirements had to do with, for instance, the location of the fencing, having a six-foot fence with privacy, two feet of lattice for additional privacy on top of it, using obscure glass on the window in the, I believe it's the breakfast room at the, or kitchen area at the back right-hand corner of the proposed home on lot number two. And then also having a built-in cabinet and a higher window sill at that location so one cannot peer down into the neighbor's yard. So those conditions remain in effect if the planning commission adopts the recommended resolution that's attached to the report.
All right, does anyone else have any other question? Brittany, did you get your question about the traffic, about the?
No, I think that was just one of two, yeah, the traffic impacts.
Yeah. And then in terms of the traffic impacts, so those were analyzed with the initial study that was prepared for the project initially. And just given the small size of the project, there's been no changes to the size of the project. Actually, it was downsized from an eight-lot subdivision to a six-lot subdivision. The findings were that the project would not have a significant impact on traffic in the area.
All right, does anybody else have any questions of staff or the applicant?
Yeah, I've got a question and it's, if it's okay to say it now.
Sure.
So it's a question really at a high level about we're bringing up and referencing wood sidings and stucco. And I did go around the project and saw a lot of wood sidings and stucco. So the historical side was there. But with the last few years, we've seen a lot of fires where wood sidings particularly are more vulnerable. And I'm just wondering from a higher level point of view, we have a neighborhood here that has got wood sidings in there. But would we want to, how would we move? Or is there any analysis being done on reducing the vulnerability to fire? And I believe, and I know that's a really complicated question and this would be just one very small side of it. But how would we, would we go about a process of only recommending more types of materials that had less vulnerability to some of the big problems with fire that we're seeing?
Well, this is Noah House. So, Commissioner Hancock, I think that's an excellent point and it kind of points to the age of the design review guidelines the city has adopted. They're relatively simple, these guidelines. And Cotati has prided itself on its craftsman residential architecture historically. And so I think those guidelines are written trying to push designers into the direction of maintaining that craftsman character. But to your point, recently, a lot of things have changed, not only in the environment and the concerns we have over building materials, but then also the actual technology that goes into those materials themselves. And there absolutely would be the ability for many of the design treatments identified in this project to be constructed of material that are significantly more fire-resistant than wood. And so staff feels like if the commission would like to add that flexibility in any decision they make tonight, that could absolutely be granted and would get to the point that you're making regarding kind of recent, more recent changes. And then just know that staff does have in our work plan for this year the creation of objective design standards, which will give the commission the ability to make some more changes to the direction we provide to our residential design applicants.
So to sort of summarize that a little bit, there's nothing that, in these design standards that we're requiring of the applicant. They could choose to do stucco should they so wish. There's nothing that's requiring them to use more vulnerable components?
That's correct. But I will point out, so the elevations identify the design, which is before the commission this evening. However, many of those features, such as some of the shingles siding, the commission, if in approving the project, could identify that those could be done with a hardy material, which is a cementitious material. It very much resembles wood shingles but is made of a cement-type material that is much less, much more resistant to burning.
Yeah, I would add to that, actually, that is already included in the notes on the elevation materials. I don't see it on all of the homes, but I do see it on some of the homes. So that could be a condition of approval that would apply to all of the homes that they'd use the hardy plank, which is a cementous fiber material that looks like wood but does not have the burning properties of wood.
Okay, well, that sounds very good. I'll ask the applicant as that when they come up as well, just what their preferences are and how they see it. So thank you very much, no more questions.
So is anybody else have any questions of staff or, so I'm going to open it up to the public. All right, so I'm going to open this up for public comments. Please state your name and address and keep your comments to three minutes. Lauren, do you have anyone that would like to speak?
Yeah, Marion Waters, go ahead. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead. It's always a question. Okay, thank you very much for all the commissioners. I would like to say, yeah, this has been a long process. We have owned our house here at eight-four-one-sixth Honor Place since 2002. And we are right next door. Originally, we thought we'd have a house right next door, which would have been fine. And we ended up with a house that was directly overlooking our backyard. So when Steven, Steven, what's your last name? There is Steven. When Steven mentioned these people have been jerked around, I'm guessing you're talking about the developers and the new owner is awesome. He's not the original developer who did jerk the neighborhood around. And yes, we do have a density here of five houses for that particular size lot. And we're all okay with six, but eight or nine were completely inappropriate. So I really take offense to saying these people have been jerked around. I'm sure you weren't talking about the existing neighbors. That said, I will also say hardy plank siding is awesome. That's what's on our house. Please add it to your conditions of approval. Glad to hear that the fencing has been noted, the six-foot fence with the two-foot lattice. The requirement of that roof to be sloped is another item that was not mentioned tonight, but is part of the, part that was mentioned was no windows facing over the neighbor's lot. So I want to make sure that that's been noted. We do, you know, we've done what we can to make sure that because of its placement, that it doesn't cause a big problem for us. You know, we're not against development. We do want to state that for the record. We'll be happy when it's developed because one of the things that we really need is for them to control water runoff coming off of that slope. One of the things that we had asked for was French drains instead of just V-ditches. And I'm not hearing that mentioned here, so I'd like to bring it up again. And definitely the privacy issue, the obscure glass have come up, the higher windows, the built-in cabinet, all of that needs to remain all the way through the approval process. That was so, so hard fought for. And I realize I'm out of time. Some of it's meant scolding Steven. But I also just want to point out that this is a fifteen-foot setback from the fence line and that was also hard fought. It is still the tallest house in the development at twenty-seven feet and three inches. And so it's critical that we keep that sloped roof line there and instead of having windows facing over our property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak to this? Chair, more, I see no other hands raised at this time. All right, so I'm going to close public comment right now and bring it back to staff and the lead planner. And can you address some of those questions that she had or issues?
Absolutely. So, yes, all of the conditions of approval and I, just reading through the history of the project, there was a lot of, it sounds like a lot of negotiations. And as the neighbor mentioned, I'm sure they were hard-fought, hard-won. Concessions that they received from the prior developer, those are all included in this project. The second story of the home on lot number two has no windows facing the neighbor's property. And the roof slopes down towards that neighbor's house from the second floor all the way down to the first floor. I don't know if, Lauren, you want to go back to the front elevation of, from the slide presentation? If you'd like to bring that slide up. In terms of drainage issues, those are addressed through the subdivision improvements that are being made. And so those will be handled at the appropriate time through the subdivision improvement process. I cannot speak to the details of that. I don't know if they're French drains or just V-ditches or how that's handled. But that is an engineering matter that's handled through the final map process. And I think that addresses the comments and the questions raised by the neighbor.
All right. Any final comments or concerns about Russell Noel? Any final comments or concerns about Russell and Noel? Any commissioner want to speak or?
I, yeah, Neil Hancock here. I was just wondering if there was an owner's representative, the owner or the owner's representative?
I think that's the person that was talking today.
No, this is Emmanuel Ursu, I'm the planner on the project, sorry.
Is the applicant available or no?
If they've raised their hand, they're aware of the meeting. I see the applicant's engineer, Marcel, is on the list here of participants.
Can you hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hey, hi, Marcel here with B.C. Engineering Group, the civil engineers on the project.
No, I don't think the applicant is on the call.
Right. Chris is here with me as well.
Okay.
And Chris is the applicant?
That's correct. Thanks for all your efforts.
So Madam Chair, would it be possible to open public comment up for a question to, or for Chris to present or a question to him?
Well, I don't, that's fine. I guess I can open it up again. Um, let me open up public comment. And go ahead.
So Chris, I just wanted to ask about that question about fire and, you know, I mean, I know it's a very difficult one and it's a very broad one, but just in terms of what you were thinking for the property and the questions there, is there anything that you are being required to do?
I'm going to build up, I'm going to build all the houses to be fire resistant. We're going to use hardy siding. We're going to make sure that our eaves and all our vents and everything are similar to what's being required at the town road. They're pretty, it's pretty clear cut what we have to do to make a house where it's going to, it's going to resist the, some of the debris that flies around during the fire. I feel real good, real good about the products that we're using, and they will be fairly fire resistant.
Okay, that's great. I just wanted, I want to, to ask that question in this forum just because of the context of where we've been in the last couple of years, and to see if there was anything that, you know, you were unhappy with, with the process that maybe we should talk about. So very much appreciate it. If you, if you want to say anything else about just your product, your project here, that's fine, or else I'll, I'll.
Thank you, Neil. I'll take it from there.
Okay, thank you very much.
So Chris, did anybody else have any comments or questions for, for the applicant? Anybody want to speak from the public?
Yes, we do have a public speaker, Russell Bunch, go ahead.
Sure.
Hello, this is Russell Bunch from Apple Bunch Architects. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I was just going to agree with what Chris says, everything will be to fireproof standards, and all the conditions that were for lot two are still in effect, and we plan on following all those to a T. And any of the conditions regarding the porch on lot two and also a garage on lot four, those are going to be dealt with as coming up, as all those have to be fulfilled as far as setbacks from the street. And I think that's it. If anybody has any other questions, I'm here to answer all of the design of the homes. Thank you.
Did you guys hear me or not?
Yes, thank you. Marion Waters, go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to say good thanks to Chris. We actually met at a previous meeting, and he's the relatively new owner. And he's our kind of people, so I want to appreciate him for that. And I think we'll have a positive working relationship with the builder. Hey, Chris, give this a call or come by and leave a note, because we may want to talk about the fence. And other than that, the trees that were mentioned in the, gosh, I don't know, was the design review, planning commission where it was at, there were some huge trees, what do they call them? Mayberry? I don't know what they're called, it starts with an M. And there was some discussion about those being, using a different plant. So I just want to mention it, since this is my opportunity to mention it, that they would choose a smaller tree than those monstrous things. And also, Brittany, thank you for your question about, in general, the connectivity. Neil, you also mentioned that bicycle paths. My understanding is that the park funding for this development has already been used. So maybe I'm wrong, I'd love to hear about that. I was told by a council member that it was used for the consulting fees to help the beach downtown play. So I'd love to hear about that, thank you.
I'm closing public comment, and we'd like to have Noah or the planner answer the questions that she just brought up.
Yeah, this is Noah House. I will say, we're happy to look at the all conditions of approval and ensure that everyone is met, but staff does appreciate the commitments made by the applicant in response to the commission's request for some fire resistant construction materials, and then also looking for trees that are going to stay appropriate size for the neighborhood as they grow and mature. And then, you know, I can't speak to past commitments of fees, but I will say that park fees are, are not collected until, until homes are built, structures are built. And so I know the fees specific to this project, the impact fees specific to this project will be coming in as these homes are built and will be available for some projects moving forward. So I can't, I'm not sure what the past references were, but we have not collected impact fees related to parks on this project as of yet.
All right, thank you. So I'm, I'm just going to say for my comments on this, I had already seen this project multiple times. So I'm very familiar with all of the conditions that are on there, but I appreciate all the detailed work that's been done, and I'm glad that all the conditions that originally were hard fought for are still in, in place. On that note, if we don't have any more discussion, would you like to have someone make a motion?
Well, I would just add to it as well, that I think it looks like a good project. I'm very pleased Marion Waters has been monitoring as a neighbor. And yeah, I'm a bit disappointed about the connectivity issues, because it does seem like it's an opportunity, but that seems like it's a past opportunity or it's gone past. But I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve it if nobody else has any input. And I'd just like a question actually to Noah on that. Should we be adding a condition of approval on the sidings, or is it sufficient what's already been said?
Well, given that the materials are identified on the plans and the discussion that the commission has held, staff feels like the, the approval tonight will give the flexibility for us to look at those issues as the project moves forward. And we do still have final design review to act on for this project, and so we can make sure we hold any direction from the commission into that action.
Well, if there's no more discussion, I am prepared to make a motion to approve it.
Go for it.
Go ahead.
So I make a motion to approve the project, and I, do I have to read out all the wording? I'm just.
Just read the resolution on page 74.
74, okay, thank you for the reference there. I was going back to, okay, page 74. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cattati, recommending city council approval of preliminary design review for six new, six new single-family homes located in the Laska Knoll subdivision at 65 Laska Lane, APM 144470-007.
Do I have a second?
I'll second, this is Sylvia.
Just to clarify, the, the commission is not recommending to the council, they are approving design review.
Okay. So is this a recommendation? Do you want me to take a roll call or?
A vote is still appropriate, but you are acting on design review rather than recommending to council.
Okay.
So do we change that wording?
That's correct.
So it's a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Cattati approving preliminary design review for six new single-family homes located at the Laska Knoll subdivision at 65 Laska Lane.
And Sylvia, you're seconding that?
And I second the motion, yes.
Okay. Do I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Lemus.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Nite.
Yes.
Commissioner Hancock.
Yes.
Vice Chair Murphy.
Yes.
Chairmore.
Yes. Thank you, staff, and thank you, everyone, for participating.
Thank you, have a nice evening.
All right, so we have reports by staff?
Thank you, Chairmore. Just briefly, this is one of those unique months where the planning commission and the city council meet in the same week, so we are going to the city council tomorrow. Of note to the commission, the VMT significance thresholds that you approved at your last meeting are moving for formal adoption by the council at tomorrow's meeting. And staff is bringing a phase-two economic development COVID-19 response before the council. This resolution is available online, but to summarize, it extends all of the current allowances for the use of outdoor areas, the public spaces as well as private spaces. The commission has probably seen and heard some progress around, you know, folks using additional outdoor areas for business activities, trying to maintain social distancing, but then also have some business activity. So staff is recommending to extend all of those existing allowances to toll or kind of put a pause on any permits that have been approved from expiring during the COVID-19 pandemic emergency declaration. And then also, staff is asking for some additional funding for the city, from the city council to support efforts such as buying or renting tents for these outdoor areas and some properties around downtown to try to facilitate people being active and, and kind of still patronizing restaurants, but while also remaining safe and meeting the state's mandates. So just the commission should be aware of that, and if anybody's interested, that is on the agenda for tomorrow's review and consideration by the planning commission. Briefly, for an update on Kessick Ranch, we've issued 15 of the 47 single-family residential permits, so those, those homes seem to be selling, and the, the developer is pulling them at a fairly steady pace. Also, the arena allocation process with the Association of Bay Area Governments is coming to an end, and so we should expect to get our arena allocation in October. As of right now, we're looking at somewhere between 270 and 350 residential units allocated to the City of Cattati from the time span of 2023 through 2030, 2031. It's an eight-year cycle. And so that will allow the city to begin the process to update our housing element. So for those of you who have been around on the commission for a while, that's a fairly intensive process, requires a lot of public engagement, and it is, you know, a significant time period. All of that is in addition to multiple changes to our housing element adoption process that have been mandated by recent state law passage. So some of you will recall the presentations we've given over the last year, talking about all the changes that the state is making. So we do anticipate a pretty hefty housing element update process, and we will be kicking that off in the, in the months to come. And then lastly, I just wanted to highlight that the American Planning Association Conference was held last week virtually. Thank you for the commissioners who were able to attend. I hope you got some, you found it beneficial, and I will say, staff took the time to try to brush up on all those changes to the housing legislation, and looking for some unique ways to engage in the community while we're all navigating the challenges of COVID. So more to come on that, but we will try to add to our creative meeting processes and engagement processes to try to make sure everyone has an opportunity to provide input as we move forward with the housing element update. And that concludes my report, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Noah. Do you have reports by commission?
I could give a report on the, attending the APA.
Okay.
So that was, it was a pretty interesting event with something like 450 planning commissioners and breaking them out into tables. So you actually at times were thrown into a table with a couple of random people across the state discussing some of the issues. And that was actually, you know, very interesting to see what was going on in East Los Angeles and, or San Diego, or some people from San Francisco on the types of bike lanes. There is a new type of bike lane called a class four bike lane, where it is on the road, but it is separated by bollards. So the bollards actually prevent the traffic from coming into the bike lane. So that was a kind of interesting discussion with somebody in San Francisco on how they're doing that. I did attend one session looking at the fire side of, or the way that fire has been becoming much more prominent, and the discussion really that it's structures that ignite. So there was a lot of analysis of how do structures ignite? And particularly concern is, is what's called ember storms, that the embers can fly ahead of a, of a fire front, so they can come up to half a mile or so, be airborne, and if they land on some material that ignites, then that can start a whole structure burning. But if you can stop those embers from getting into houses and igniting in the attic, there's probably a really good chance of it not setting a structure on fire. And so there was the report, I think, by the assistant manager of Santa Rosa, having a look at just what structures had ignited in the 2017 fire, as well as the ones that were being rebuilt. So it was a pretty much an interesting overview, and, I mean, I, I think there's a fair amount of thinking and work that's got to go into how do you work with older buildings, of which I have an older building, I have a 1950s house, so I've been doing some upgrades on that. Anyway, it's very interesting. Thank you, Noah, for letting us know.
Thank you. Anyone else have any?
Yeah, this is Sylvia. I do, I just wanted to share that this Thursday, the Los Yen Sonoma County Wema Organizations is holding its annual State of Latinos in Sonoma County Forum virtually. And this year, the topics are interesting, because one of them will be expanding homeownership, and they're going to bring two leading speakers that are kind of on opposing sides of CEQA and, and climate, climate and environmental laws that kind of, you know, kind of maybe hinder low-income housing and affordable housing being built. So there's going to be one discussion on expanding homeownership, which includes discussions about CEQA. And also, the other topic will be the digital divide, closing the digital divide and broadband in our low-income and rural communities. So we're going to have some local speakers talk about what we're doing here and some statewide initiatives that are happening as well. So that's Thursday, people can register to attend it.
Thank you, Sylvia. Anyone else, any, any other reports by commission?
This is Brittany, I just wanted to ask Sylvia, do you know if there's a website that you could refer us to, to get more information on that?
Yes, it should be on either Los Yen Sonoma County on Facebook, the Facebook page, it should be a link in there to register. And there's also, I don't know if they have it on the website, but there is a losyensonomacounty.org website, or I don't know if it's just losyen.org or losyensonomacounty.org. But I can send information to, to Carrie or Lauren, and then if they want to forward it to whoever's interested.
That would be great. Okay. All right, is, seeing other commissioners, have items received, updated, and was posted?
No, Chairmore.
All right. That's the case, and we are adjourned.
Thank you, Lisa and staff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for attending.
Welcome. Bye.
It's been a thrill. Goodnight.